Mike Rosa.
Go.
Good evening, the board has now returned to closed session and will begin with regular session. Keys, schools, district, board trustees. Board, we're going to close session items, we have entered our report out. 4442, any approval of amendment of the business, do we have any?
No amendment.
All right, will you approve the agenda as is? Motion, do I say it? You got a second, all favor. Aye. Thank you, moving on to the vice, vice mister green.
Good evening, good bye. Beginning by the identity of the United States of America and the Republic of Canada. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to infestation first of order trustees, do we have any? No, we don't have. We're moving on to announcements, most of this was run until further notice of over nineteen. We're moving on to eight point one, separate votes, we have those. Anybody have any questions in terms of this? All right, without that, we're moving on to the standard agenda items. Any questions to move into nine point one and nine point six? All right, do we have questions to approve? First, do I have a second?
All second.
All favor. Aye.
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 Thank you, moving on to ten point one, approval of surgery, the last by confidential management personnel. Any questions in terms of this? Motion to approve?
Maybe I won't do.
First, do I have a second? All favor. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, moving on to ten point two, approval of twenty twenty one delegates in the ballot. This is something we do every, I believe you do it here, you do it two years? We have two candidates and two vacancies, so sometimes we can never decide which is who we want to have. But since it's only two, do we have a motion to approve? The both candidates? Do we have a motion to approve all, do we have a second? All favor. Aye. Thank you, moving on to public hearing for the interim. Second interim is at six thirty nine. Ms. Mars.
Good evening, when you turn my light on. And I gave you all the handouts, I wanted to share with you, there's been obviously lots of changes all the time. And once the second interim was complete, we received some new information on additional COVID relief money. So I gave you this spreadsheet that shows all of the different costs of money that we either have received or are going to be receiving. And I just wanted to give you a really little summary of what we received and sort of what we used the funds for. So the very first line item is the CARES Act, and this is the SRF funds that we received. And we received two hundred twenty four thousand, we spent one hundred twenty eight, we have ninety five thousand remaining. That needs to be spent by September twenty twenty two. With those dollars, we were able to buy a new floor lift where we went through. And two electronic signboards, one for each school site, those are supposed to be sold sometime around April. We've updated our email system and we migrated, or we're in the process of migrating our servers to a cloud base, which is really going to be beneficial for all of our programs and technology. And right below that, this is the, what's being called SRF two funds, and this is new funds. And we are going to be receiving part of this, I believe in this fiscal year and the rest in September. And this is estimated to be one point four million dollars, so obviously we haven't encountered any of that yet. And so we, until it's final. And right below that, September one seventeen, this was the very first project that we received, it was only twelve thousand eight hundred dollars. We spent all of that on PPE last fiscal year. Below that are the learning cost mitigation funds, and first line item is the gear funds. And we're using all of that money to help fund our summer school program this year. And to fund the summer school programs, it'd be a little over our hundred thousand dollars. So we were able to easily use this amount to fund it. Below that are the CRF funds for coronavirus relief funds. This is the part of money that had to be spent by December of last year. And so we really had a big crush on to get all of that spent. And then two days before the deadline, they extended another six months, so that was a little too late. And anyway, that was the biggest part of money, and so most of it was spent at six hundred thousand dollars on technology, which included twenty eight thousand dollars for hotspots for students to use at home. Twenty one thousand dollars to be for insurance coverage for all the grownups that live at home. And three hundred five thousand dollars on SCAPV, and twenty five thousand dollars for remote learning software. And fifty six thousand dollars for additional PPE and sanitation. And then just some other miscellaneous items. And below that is the child nutrition state supplemental, the elementary enrichment. This we just received, I had no idea we were getting it. It's fourteen thousand dollars, and I don't know what I'm spending on right now. We're looking into some things, possibly buying a food service shop, a refrigerator truck. And also two new convincing units to extend the life of our walk-in refrigerator freezer. And below that is the proposition ninety eight money, it was seventy one thousand dollars, and that's where we gave the rest parts of our school program. Additional custodial staff, library shelves, and additional hotspots. So that's been fully covered. Below that is the brand new SB eighty six, this was just announced on March first. And so we are estimated to receive an instruction, an in-person instruction grant of two hundred seventy five thousand dollars. And expanded learning opportunities grant of five hundred eighty one thousand dollars. So we will have future planning over what we'll do with those dollars. So overall, just for the coronavirus pandemic, we are receiving about two and a half million dollars. We spent one point one, and we have two point three left to spend. If you turn the page, or I'm sorry, if you ever heard of the first page in your handout. I did add the SRF two funds, the one point four million that we're expected to get. There's a whole slew of allowable uses. If you turn the page, I highlighted item fourteen, and then actually item thirteen as well. They get added in a lot of facilities to use. And I know we have some really tricky, leaky windows at elementary school, we might do some of that. Management keeping lots of things that I think we could be very creative in using those dollars, that would be my recommendation. The next page just shows where we are receiving one point four nine, maybe to do an idea of what other districts in our area are receiving in the same funds.
Was this like based on outside of the EDA, or?
Um, there were different factors, including your title one school for the community population. If you look at page again, this is the brand new for the March first government news announcement. And this was the proposal that they reached, literally opening schools. So it's providing two million for in-person instruction support, four point six million for expanded learning. The in-person instruction grant, that's our two hundred seventy five thousand dollars. It's going to come to us in two payments, one is going to be this May, and then the other payment will be in August. It's available for expenditure through August of two thousand twenty two. And LEA is responsible for districts, and that's to provide in-person instruction in order to receive these funds, which we are doing so we all have the purpose to receive those funds. If you turn the page, highlighted in yellow, it's just providing in-person instruction, may include hybrid models, offering fewer than five days per week of in-person instruction, only the LEA offers, only if the LEA offers in-person instruction to the greatest extent possible. Right below that, highlighted in green, this is the expanded learning opportunities grant. It's approximately five hundred eighty one thousand dollars for the district. And this portion of funds will also include the charter school, and they're slated to receive about two hundred fourteen thousand dollars. If you turn the page again, highlighted in green, at least ten percent of these funds shall be used to hire paraprofessionals to provide supplemental instruction and support through the duration of the program with priority for full-time paraprofessionals. These funds are available for expenditure through August of twenty twenty two. With this, there's always lots of caveats and things that we have to do. And this one requires that expenditure plan to be adopted by the school board on or before June first, so that's going to come out pretty quickly. And it has to be a plan describing how the funds will leave us, so we definitely need to do some planning and write another plan. So that's it for the COVID funds, now we can start with the second interim report. So if you will turn to page two. I just wanted to give you a little synopsis, I know we have new board members, and so I just wanted to explain that the second interim report is a snapshot in time of the district's revenue expenditure forecast over the current fiscal year, as well as a projection of the two subsequent fiscal years. It's a time to adjust the budget, estimated revenues and expenditures, and assess changes from the first interim report and begin projecting the ending of that balance of the fiscal year. The second interim report covers the period of time from July one through January thirty first. So I wanted to make that clear that these numbers do not include the agreement of these levels of the CSDA. I also would like to point out, below in the yellow highlighted area, just a reminder, we remember in the first interim that we do have a whole harness for our EDA, which is really fortunate considering we are in the running moment. And then there is a possible cliff in two thousand twenty two, twenty three, it could affect our funding. We do not get those students back, but that's left. If you could turn to page three. I just want to show you that I have built in, in my projections, a decrease in EDA. So I'm estimating nine for the current year and thirteen for the following year. But if you look at all these Friday letters, we are actually down an additional thirteen at this time. So kind of budget adoption, I may adjust that number down or even more. If you turn to page two. This shows the column in blue, this is second interim compared to first interim. I'm sorry. So we have eleven point five million in revenues, eleven point three in expenditures, and so we have an excess of revenues of one hundred ninety five thousand. And if you look at first interim, that number was six hundred seven hundred thousand. And so at first interim, we had talked about things that we were going to do because we had that high fund excess in revenues. And so we purposely reduced at second interim that excess by four hundred eighty three thousand dollars. And I'll show you exactly how we came to that if you turn the page. This is all of the changes, all of the budget changes that we made from first interim to second interim. So one of those two things are just moving dollars in a category, a category. So for example, instead of it being in supplies, we moved it to operations, so it's just an in and out there. But the two things that actually we did to reduce the four hundred eighty seven thousand is we had decided at first interim to move a hundred thousand dollars for PPE grouping projects, so we moved that into one hundred fourteen. And then the second item highlighted in yellow was the anticipated increase in social end costs. So that gets spent to about three hundred eighty thousand. So those two added together is like decreased that excess by four hundred thousand. Any questions about that? And then if you will turn to page eight. And this is the page I always review, you showing what our reserve is. So even with all of these changes, we still have projected reserve of twenty seven point six percent, which is still very high for our district. And if you turn to the next page, you can see there are fund balances, the fund balances in blue, these are estimated based on the assumptions that we'll be having today. The next page is the only year projection, and this is where if you look at section C. Going across, you see we have an excess right now of one hundred ninety five thousand. And the next year is projected to go up to three hundred twenty three thousand. And the following year, you see it's negative, and that is due to that drop in EDA, we're calling it an EDA cliff. So if that happens, we could potentially be deficit spending at that point, but we have a pretty high fund balance. So that's really, really minimal for us. Please turn to page thirteen, and this is the charter school. So they have revenues of three point two million, expenditures of three point one. And after they make their annual loan payments, they will be deficit spending to a thousand eight hundred twenty seven dollars. And they still maintain all of their career reserves. On the next page, you can see the fund balance, the store fund balance. And if you turn to page fifteen, this is their change in enrollment. So in the current year, it's three hundred forty three, which they have, the charter school only receives a whole harness over the current year. They don't have a whole harness in the next year like the district does. So their funding is going to be a little more volatile. Right now, I think as of last Friday, their enrollment is three hundred twenty six, and actually only three hundred thirty three. So I might adjust it down a bit more at budget adoption. And that is my presentation of second interim, do you have any questions?
Any questions? Anything come out of the question?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to close the public hearing at six thirty three.
Just like I said, just one other thing is the seventy, kind of a progress that there is ten percent funding that has to be spent on paraprofessionals or instructional aides. And that is going to, and part of it is to hire them at full time. And the issue with that is going to be that unfortunately, when we do hire those individuals, we're going to state to them that they are temporary employees. Because the funding is temporary, it's one-time funds. So it's frustrating to know that we're going to get this fund, but that we can't really do long-term planning with it. And then it's a very temporary, it's almost a band-aid that we'll get to hire some people and have them work with kids and begin to do great things. And suddenly, when things are going well, we tell them, thank you for your service, and we're not around. So not only is it hard to get people who are willing to work with students as a paraprofessional and what the pay is, but now I think they may be even less attractive when we're telling them that we're hiring them, but we can't keep them. So that's, I think, one of the frustrating things that I don't think we hear from some of the budgeting. So I, and Stephanie and I have talked about that and how frustrating that is, but it is.
All right, thank you. Ten point four, do we have a motion to approve the second interim we just heard? We have a first, we have a second? All favor.
Aye.
Aye. Well, thank you. Moving on to just by approval of CSDA cost of bargaining agreement. Ms. Brazil.
So I'm asking that the board approve our agreement that we reached with California School Employees Association in our chapter here in Keys. They have, we have negotiated to complete the agreement for this year. And we are planning on meeting very soon to begin the work for the following contract year. So at this point, I'm asking that the board approve it through this year.
Any questions in terms of this? We have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
We have a first or a second? All favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving to ten point six, the substitute teacher COVID nineteen temporary daily pay increase, Mr. Brazil, what was that last?
Yeah, I shared with all of you how difficult it is to find substitutes during this pandemic environment. And so the county has basically everyone across the country, across the country, across the county in order to seek substitutes, have raised their daily rates. And so obviously, if they do, we kept ours, we probably wouldn't attract anyone to, as difficult as it is already. And if we're paying even less than another neighboring district, why would anybody want to take that assignment? So what we did was to bring ours to the level of everyone else in the county. It is a temporary, and I want to emphasize that, that is just through the end of this school year, so through the end of June. Then we revert back to what our daily rate was before. So again, this is using some of those COVID funds to try and attract individuals who are going to be coming into our district and again, being able to compete with the surrounding.
Thank you. Any questions in terms of this?
And just to, just to share, this came about with us entering into a letter of agreement with our bargaining units, so I wanted to share.
My only question was if the difference was going to be paid with the coronavirus immunity and to that. We have a motion to approve?
All motion.
We have a first, we have a second?
All second.
All favor.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Moving on to just set up discussion and possible action after reopening schools to hold this, Ms. Brazil.
Okay, so the item here, I met with staff and continued on in planning with committees and trying to get as much fan-put of feedback as we possibly could to be prepared for what our next steps, which is what do we do as we proceed in reopening schools. As of today, we had thought that the county would have moved from purple to red, they have not. Red, or moving into the red allows us to open schools to the middle school and to the high schools and not having to adhere to COVID. So it allows us to open up, basically as we, you could open up full time and have every student attend. So I've asked staff and the administrators at each of the sites to put together proposals for three different scenarios. Why three, there's really no reason I asked for three. But so they have submitted them to the board, I've shared them with the board. And so those are the scenarios that we're asking that the board entertain or look at for tonight and making a decision as we go forth to reopen. And I'll ask the administrators to be here in case there were any questions and they are best equipped to answer their own specific site, if there's a site specific.
Thank you.
I was just looking over all these notes, a couple of questions, so if you guys can jump up and answer. If we go full day, what's that going to look for a distant learner? Anyone can jump up. Ms. Reddick? You're probably the most knowledgeable. So if I was a distant learner, what would happen to my school day if we went full day? Or in one of those scenarios?
All right, so and this is what my concerns about full day is. We have two options for those folks. Either they go onto packet learning only, which to me is not much of an option. There's also the option of having them be included with the teacher while they're teaching their classroom. But my main concern for those folks is that they're going to get not pay attention to because the teacher's going to be busy with their class that's in front of them, which is probably going to be the majority of the folks. We might take somebody and have that person be in charge of one or two different grade levels and have that person only be in charge of distance learning only. We might think of hiring a sub or two and having those people assist with that process. But the way which this is set up now, those people are getting an equal treatment to the folks that are here on campus now. And so moving to a full day is going to kind of mess with that balance quite bad. So if, so would, at least from my side, when looking at scenario one, which is that full day, that's where those problems are going to come from. And they are, they are very valid concerns to have. How we solve them or resolve them will come up, will be with creativity of our staff and kind of what folks in the community are wanting us to do. And how many of them are actually planning on staying on to six learning? Because we may find out that we have five percent of the district that choose to do that. And if that's the case, then maybe we hire a long-term staff for the rest of the year in the charge of that. Or maybe we assign that to a teacher who doesn't want to come back. There are many ways in which we can handle it, but we won't know until we get there.
Mr. Sturgis, could you explain how you kind of knew your class involvement? Because I think that's kind of what Mr. Murray was kind of explaining.
In our, in all three scenarios from the middle school, our scheduling fits. We don't have to change our schedule at all. And the way that we're doing is that the homegrown kids and the in-class kids are taking the same lessons from Zoom. And I will tell your staff that it is difficult, but they're, we're doing it right now. And they're, they're just champions, and we're getting there. But regardless of where we are, we don't have separate for the homeowners and separate for the in-class, they're all together.
Can you describe a lot of that, or?
Kids moving to the first period in the morning, so let's say each classroom has, right now they're having that performance. They're all there all day, so if ten kids show up, they're in the class, the other ten is home, they're logging on, they won't come in. So then we're in schedule, they have second period, they log into the second period class, where the major is the van room. So they'll log into there, and then she'll go ahead and teach her Zoom for that class period. And again, it's kids in the seats, it's also the kids that are, are working with them. The, the most difficult part about this is the hands-off stuff that we do. Because we can't, we really, especially in classrooms, we do science, I know it's really difficult. Because, you know, she'll have to do experiments, and she'll, kids, she really can't wrong with that. So that's one of the things the kids are missing for that part.
Any issues with classroom management for the Zoom part?
I would say no, the, the, the big problem is we have, you know, eleven, twelve, thirteen-year-olds and, you know, staying on task is kind of, is kind of the big thing, just to keep them motivated, coming into the classrooms. And then my office staff is doing a great job making sure the kids aren't being pulled, making sure that they know where they're supposed to be. And some of the kids stay on par with that too.
And Mr., when you're hearing about us saying as, as that. Sorry, I'm just trying to get an idea of what it would look like if we.
No, I appreciate the question. Yeah, I think all of the, I mean, I answered the question, there's multiple ways of approaching this, there's three different programs. There's going to be minutes of how we can approach it. I think it comes with the idea of having teachers as a teaching simultaneously with business college students, that they do one option. And maybe adjusting some of the schedules so they're a little bit shorter, so there's some prep time in the afternoon to do that as well. The high school is probably the most difficult, we would not be able, and we're hoping at any one fall, that all those kids come out. Because as the schedule, right now, it's still a little bit limited, you know, from, they gotta, they're supposed to stay at home. And this is where the independent school, this is where, and I think that changed the high school and all of the different line of law.
Is that just for us? Yes. I kind of agree with you as well.
No, and just to say, Mr. Wen, that's all three administrators of Mr. Wen, however, in terms of having to create plans for assistant three different schools. So I appreciate his, his work on it, and I also want to mention that they all three have worked together and really made their staff comfortable with what our next steps need to be. And they've come up with plans that I think are very feasible, again, there's not a perfect plan. I think we all know that adjustment will be the.
The board members? So, so what? Mr. Brazil, what was stopping us from opening up our full-day cohorts sooner than the governor's recommended, April first?
The, the only thing that's stopping us from moving to full day, right now is that we're in order to, to move to full day all day. The thing that's lacking right now is us being purple and not having to move to, to the red tier. The red tier is what allows us to mix cohorts, or to allow us to not have to stick to one cohort, not being able to interact with the others. So we are anticipating, and that is one of the things that many districts surrounding us have tentatively put out dates, which I knew they couldn't be in concrete because it is all dependent on the health department's designation of whether we are in purple or in red. So today, it was released that we did not need the criteria to move from purple to red, and that more than likely that will probably happen next week. I think people who had thought that we would be able to open heck even beginning tomorrow or if we were going to wait to find dates, that we would be able to do so ahead of what even the state and the governor have have shared. So that's the only thing that's really holding us back. The day that we move from purple to red, we will then begin or be able to bring students in in the capacity of being able to mix them together and having those attend all day and full day.
Okay, so in in where we're sitting right now, we're on cohorts pulled in, correct?
Absolutely. We are about to line cohorts at this point instead of half days, we could certainly be running full days of cohorts, yes.
Admins in the audience, is that something you guys are looking to or not yet?
What are my plans to have that happen where we do the?
Yeah, well, I've got a plan, but they're not like, are are those plans you're looking for to the first or?
Whenever whenever you let us know.
I I think what what the administration and what the committees who's been working on it have have done is what we really need is if the board tells us this is our or makes the the recommendation that here's where we're going, I think staff is, I know that the staff at Keys, whether it be the charter or the elementary or the middle school, they will work to make that happen. I I think we're we're all just kind of at the point that we want the direction. We want to do what is required and and what is legal to do within the guidelines of the health department. So I think that any options, if we're directed to implement, then I think that staff will be more than, not only do I think they're capable, but I know that they will do some.
I'm looking at the calendar. I just want to ask you. So March 15th would be two weeks of us around the works. Is this board willing to go full day cohorts?
I think so.
I like that.
You guys, full day cohorts?
We could do that in purple.
In purple?
Yeah.
Yes, so.
So what day? The fifteenth, the next Monday. And then the governor's about April 1st, so this is the day. When is Easter break?
Our our Easter break begins on April 2nd, which is Good Friday. So our our April 1st is a minimum day and then our break is that following the week.
Is this board willing to mix cohorts after spring break if we're in red? And not do the April 1st if the governors put up?
April 1st.
April 1st. April 1st.
You guys all?
The reason I like it is because when you, it's been so long since the kids went back. If they could come back for half a day, get a good feel of the situation, I think everybody would, it would be a smoother transition when they come back.
And give and it would give time for the the staff, teachers and etc.
Yeah, because they could say, oh, shoot, I'm a kid or, you know, it's not going to be exactly how we think. That's my opinion.
Mr. Rizal?
Well, but I'd like to share that if we were to do that, that actually, in my opinion, would allow us to then kind of have a week if that first day was a complete disaster or if there are things we haven't fully thought out, which, I mean, there's always that chance that we have a plan perfectly. But that would give us kind of a week of whether it be facilities or having to make extra room in classrooms or whatever it may be, that that would give us kind of the opportunity to do so and then have students come back. I think I I'm I'm perfectly and and believe that our staff is perfectly willing to do what the board authorizes us to to be able to do. And so whether it's the first or or the 12th, I I like the first just because again, I think it gives us a little opportunity to see what this will be like. But I know that the 12th is after the Easter break as well.
I'd like to suppose that I'd like to tell you what I'd like to do on the first. Yeah.
I'd like to have a grand opening and I would like to see all of these back so that they can have their Easter parties and new art projects and be together. And possibly this is not creating a bar too, and then all of the black box. Move agents like a field.
Your stretch is on, I don't think you must stop your hair.
What I would say is is that I want us to get used to the idea of how can the kids play? Because it's so hard when you have not had resets on campus yet. And I would like to see them do, be able to protect things like left rotations, have things like recess rotations and figure out whether we're going to be able to even have separated during that time.
All right. I will leave the motion, but I'm going to ask a quick poll. I will do this one on poll. First or poll?
First. First.
I just want to make a motion that a lot of the group do too. So what we're discussing is March 15th cohort will be day. April 1st cohort will be day. And then not red, first chance to resume red, we go full hole, full hole, five days, a quarter and a half. And then the the tour start would be four days, correct? Mr. Rizal? Or three and a half?
We're just just to just to clarify about KES and SIS, we'll also see four and a half days. There's a negative on the date that's not on the count. Perhaps that's not something we knew, which was hard for people to realize that we did have. It feels so long ago, but I've been thinking.
Like I do want, since we have all events here, I want to promise you guys that the system learning has had issues. We we want to see progress in the process. Kind of seems like we're scratching for the system learning that I think is possible with the lower ones. It might be like the water pressure. So if we have issues, like bring the folks over so we can see what we do to do that. That's it. I think it will work. We we want to onboard. Do you think we're waiting for a pause? I'm going to make a motion today that you're ready. I'm going to make a motion. We go go full in April cohorts, we're March 15th. And then if we're red, we're on April 1st, we can land the cohorts to to open to a traditional school. Or if the first chance we get, turn to red. So if it gets over three degree rate, then we come back and come to regular. Mr. Rizal, is that it? We want to say?
First if possible.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a motion on the second.
I'll check it.
What would we do if I got that? Second, all over.
Aye.
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 And this is for all businesses, all. All right. Ten point eight. We're well, we can't do that school teacher during COVID-19 temporary daily penalties.
So we know that during this and and that distance learning has been tough on on kids and and parents, but also on our staff. And so we really wanted to extend that school year. We have not had summer school, what we did the prior year, two years prior. And I thought that we really need to do so this year. I can provide the opportunity for kids who have a separate learning loss to have that opportunity to work on some skills during the summer month. But we also realize that our staff and and even kids, they they need to have a break. And so we thought that what we do would be four weeks of June. So all of June, summer school will be finished at the end of June and people can still have their delight to kind of enjoy some of a break. And then we return to to school in in August. So the our per diem wage for summer school has typically been very low because we would never have the funds to do. Because we have COVID funds that are supposed to be spent on providing opportunities for students to make up some of that learning loss. What we did is engaged with our unions and for both paraprofessionals and for teachers, we're asking that the board in or allowed a temporary, this is only for this summer school. It will be finished in June and we go back to regular rates that were before. So it's requesting a daily rate increase for subs, not for subs, I'm sorry, for summer school teachers. And paraprofessionals will be the next type, I believe.
All right, I have any questions? All right, do we have motions approved?
All motion.
First, you have second.
Yes, sir.
All favoriters?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to 10.9, approval of CSVA summer school on September 8th, COVID-19 temporary daily penalties. Same sub minus 10.8, but different union?
Yes, so we we wanted to make sure that again that we're, we have paraprofessionals to assist because we really want to keep those, the the groups as supported by staff as we possibly can. And so we're asking that the instruction rates also then be compensated at a higher rate for their time that they normally would would not be working.
Questions or concerns? Motion through?
I'll make that motion.
I got the first, then I'm going to move to it. Mr. Simmons, you got a second? All favoriters?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Moving on to level one, COVID-19. Maybe soon we'll be able to take this one off.
And just before I I go on to to that, I want to share that in in summer school, we are trying to do or to plan for a truly being in in person. So we're not finalized completely, but that is just so that I can share with everyone. That's kind of the the thought. But if we have students who we have to provide some instruction at home, then we're going to explore that to the best of our ability. But I just wanted to to let everybody know that that's the the hope is that we are going to look at students who have demonstrated great learning loss and ask those students to participate in summer school. So it's not necessarily we're opening it up and allowing anybody to come to summer school. We're going to focus it on those who have the least skills at at this point and who we think and with parent approval, that they will benefit from attending a summer program that's much more of an intervention and and trying to bridge those gaps that they get up.
Zoom doesn't work sometimes, I know that.
It does, it does too. So COVID-19, although you are saying we are hearing case rates dropping, I honestly had thought that today would be, would have been the day that we moved to to red. But I I also believe that it will be next Tuesday. I guess it didn't happen this week, we hope it happens next week. I mean, that's the idea anyway. I'm feeling like we're finally seeing kind of the end of of the tunnel, but we're certainly not out of it. I I want to remind everyone that during this environment, our guard can't be completely let down, that we still have to even opening up, that we have to follow procedures. We have to follow all of the safety protocols that have been established and we need to take those very seriously. And the other thing I want to show is obviously the the vaccines are are out. They are becoming much more readily available than they have been. At one point, it was very difficult to try and get an appointment. I think those are getting somewhat better. So we're hoping that as many people again who choose to have that will do that and that that will help us have safe en environments.
All right, thank you. Moving on to 12.1, super technical.
Okay, so our reopening that we began on March 1st has actually gone very well. There were some some hiccups at the beginning, which there there will be in the future as well. But I think that we were, it it was, I think that the collective thought at the end of the day is it was just nice to have kids on campus and to to finally see them. I think that that was really the the biggest thing. So we are very happy to be back, even if it is limited. The hiring process for the middle school principal, we're going to begin shortly. Mr. Stewart has announced to his staff and to the the board and district that he will be retiring at the end of June. So we're not prepared yet to celebrate his retirement at this meeting, but we're certainly very proud of his work and we we wish him well. But again, you're not getting off the hook that that quickly. So we will begin to to advertise. I just want people to know that that's what we'll be doing. We're also going to begin the hiring process. We're hiring the district director of fiscal service. As Mrs. Morris has decided that she too is going to retire at the end of July. So again, this isn't the the final day to to celebrate their accomplishments and their great service to Keys, but the the day will will come. Summer school planning, we're in the process of it. We have met even with cohorts from across the county to kind of discuss models for summer school programs so that we have ideas and and we plan for the absolute best four weeks that we can to get students reacquainted with some of the skills that they have kind of had diminished as a result of distance learning. LCAP update, we're required, that has not gone away, no, none of those requirements. So we need to kind of quickly begin to address the LCAP and as Ms. Morris stated, also the the plan for expenditures for those funds. So there's a number of plans and things that we got reprieved for for a while, but now they're all back with and with very short timelines, so we'll be working on that. The budget development is going and and taking place. It's a process that's continuously being worked on from now until June, where then we will hold a public hearing and have it approved along with the LCAP. The substitute temporary increase compensation, again, I've already shared that that is to be able to compete with surrounding districts. Attendance continues to be a worry as we look at declining enrollment. Every Friday, when I send the Friday letter out, I have shared that those numbers are are kind of continuing to drop. We're hoping that that will will stabilize. Hiring an additional teacher, we we are moving forward with doing that to temporarily support grades that are struggling with the emphasis being on the lower grades. And that is being flown at at this time. Science adoption will be coming to the board soon. And what I believe and what my recommendation at this point, having looked at all of the programs, but I'm I'm not making the recommendation a committee will, but I think that we're ready to move forward. And every student succeeding award and honors, go to our very own Elam Dominguez Soto from KES who's in first grade. I wanted to congratulate this amazing young lady and her accomplishments and her overcoming of obstacles. She, we were able to see a video today of the honorees. Typically, this is done at the county office and it's held as a breakfast and it's a great celebration to sit with parents and kids and to really hear some of these stories of personal struggles and kids who who overcome them. And so I'm saddened that we weren't able to do that in in person. It was done via video, but those students have received gift baskets from AXA, from the School Boards Association and from Gallery Winery. I'm hoping Gallery Winery was careful with what they gave out. They they are sponsors of of the event, which I think is a great one. And so we congratulate, I wish to to thank the staff for making the nomination. And I congratulate the the parents on supporting such an amazing young lady. I I have no doubt that this young lady will go far. I'd also like to thank the entire staff for their hard work, determination and flexibility as we continue to work our way out of this pandemic. Our entire key staff have worked tirelessly for just about, we're just shy of a year now in this COVID environment. We were two weeks, our last day of instruction was, I believe, March 19th or 18th. And our first day out was March 19th. So we were just shy of a year of having the school closed. So I'd like to welcome back our our students. And I hope that those continue on distance learning and feel comfortable to join those in person in the near future as we move forward to full reopening. I'm very thankful for having each of you to focus on daily and staff. It was, I certainly struggled this past year to best support each of you in this amazing school district and as our students, our students, you you are missed and you are welcome back with open arms and your safety remains our primary focus. And that's one of the things that I want to to remind each of us that we need to do our part to be safe and to maintain a safe and 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 not increase any infection rates while schools are open. I also want to thank the parents of this small yet mighty community for their resilience, their dedication, support and trust this past year as we all struggled with school closure and uncertainty. You've all sacrificed and been put through stress at levels never entered before. You were parents, counselors, teachers, and you, most notably, were role models to each of your children as they faced distance learning and the disconnect from school and social interactions. This has not been easy on any on anyone at all. And most especially, I know for parents, I'm proud of each of you and your dedication to seeking support and and truly and the best part and looking for the best possible education and possible for your children. I know that many of you struggled financially, emotionally and simply put into providing for your families. It it has been tough. We know our community suffered and suffers greatly. It is how I. It is, however, a community with dignity, spirit, and courage, and we will all recover. As a district, I will continue to support, encourage, and pride and vow to ensure each student is allowed to learn. These have been incredibly trying times for each of us, and we can only begin to see the light at the end of the tunnel that seemed at times to be increasing without an opening to a world we need. I thank you for your support and for all you do as parents. I'd like to close by thanking the key board for their leadership, heart, perseverance, and dedication to serving students. I know the past year has not been easy. And I know how you have each worked tirelessly to make the best decisions possible for our students. I thank you for following your hearts and thinking of students and their safety. It has not been an easy road, and I am thankful for the support and help from every one of our staff members and, and board. So I thank you, and again, I look forward to moving beyond this COVID environment, and truly beginning to realize a new, even if it is a new normal, but moving on with life. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to twelve point two, board member comments, Mr. Simmons?
Well, I'm looking forward to see the kids, I've been watching them walk into school, and it's good, it's kind of a taste of what we're going to get more of. But I see the kids all laughing, and everybody seems to enjoy coming back, and teachers are seeming to be happy, and hopefully we'll get back to a new normal here pretty soon, and thanks for all the hard work, coming up with all these scenarios every two weeks, or three weeks, how many times, you've been doing this for a year, so it's amazing, all the work you guys put in, it's appreciated.
Alright, Mr. Rizal?
I want to think of something very inspiring, right, that's what I'd love to do. And the only thing that comes to mind right now is a quote by a world champion boxer by the name of Mike Tyson. I remember Mike saying one time, "All the planning and preparation before one of his events goes right out the window the minute he gets hit." And he says, you know, "When that happens, you got to take a step back, take a deep breath, and go at it again." I, I referred to this little statement, because we are going to be opening for just a brief moment, just to get a taste of what it's like to reopen. And I just want to make sure that everyone out there knows that our opinion is, for the most part, that we want this to be a smooth transaction, the best we can, and I think it's a consensus on the board that the best way to proceed with that is to give you, the staff, teachers, faculty, to give everybody a taste of it. So that's why our decision was made, I believe, was to, to open where it's only a half day, and just kind of get a taste. So, you know, I think my point is, to refer to Mike again, is that we're going to probably get hit, and if we do, we've got to be able to have a plan for that, because it always goes haywire, and you just think you've done everything you can, so, and that's life. So I just know that, you know, we're on your side, we got your backs, and we'll get through this, no doubt. Thank you, and that's all.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Rizal?
Yeah, I just want to say that it's going to be a great experience to see kids back on campus, and, you know, having fun and playing, and having their life back. Statistic, statistics said that depression, suicide rate was ninety-nine percent between the thirteen and eighteen, and drug overdose was one-nineteen. So us opening up schools will mitigate some of that problem of being a kid. I look forward to our kids being back on the other side.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Rizal?
I just want to say thank you to all the teachers and principals for doing all the hard work. And I know you, you're doing a lot.
Thank you. I have a couple things. Like Mr. Rizal said, that every student succeeding, student award today, and it's really fun and emotional, and hard breakfast to go through sometimes, because some of these cases, as adults, if you hear some of these cases, you just look at each other, and I complain about this, you know, and it's, these kids go through a struggle. So happens that one of our students got eliminated, and one is a cute little kid that I saw through kindergarten, and she's in first grade. First grade teacher's what we had, kindergarten was a struggle for her. And by the end of kindergarten, she wasn't the same, she wasn't the same student anymore, she was a learner. And it was amazing to see her adapt to school. And she would come through the lunch line when we're serving, and we'll close down with coronavirus. And mom would always say, you know, "We don't always need the food," but she wants us to come see the people from school. She wanted to know her, and she always showed her toys, and she was just a ray of sunshine, I guess you could say. But I appreciate the county for still putting on some sort of award ceremony. It's nothing what we want, she deserves more, but I'm glad that they kept up the tradition and still put on a show. I came in here super early to watch it before the meetings, I didn't want to miss it. With the school plan, I, some of these families think, might think we're rushing, some of these families might think we're taking two small baby steps. I really feel we're ready, and we're, these baby steps are necessary. We're open for a short day, and then we go a whole day, and then we go to blended, and I think, I think we're ready. I've been on campus watching the kids come in, and they're super excited, and new schoolers aren't as excited as the first year, but but you remember when we were in school? And I would be honest, we talked to some families in town that they didn't send their kids, because it wasn't full day, and it wasn't five weeks. And all this talk to coronavirus, it was, "It's not safe, it's not safe," and now it's like, okay, we want more. So it's, we do talk to the community, we do know what the community wants, and I believe all five board members made a decision, and what best the community is about. The staff, they're, they were so happy to be on campus this week, they're so happy to be back with the kids. And it showed, and the kids felt it, I know they do. So I'm really happy that I worked out. And we're here to support, and please, we do, we do care about the dishes runners that choose not to come back to school. Please make sure that we're doing the best that we can for them, it's not going to stand, we know that. But we need to support them, and adjust as we need to. But hopefully they're going to feel safe and want to come to school, and that's what we want.
Moving on to thirteen point one, next board meeting will be April thirteenth, closed session at five thirty, record session will be at six. Motion to adjourn at seven thirty-six?
All motion.
First or second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? I didn't say aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Guys, have a good night.